Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the January 12th Public Work Session in the Neshamani School Board. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Excuse me, roll call. Call the order, please, Mrs. Burns.
Mr. Parentana.
Aye.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Hollenbach?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz is also absent with prior notice. Mr. Marington?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Prior to the meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property.
The board in public will find the enrollment report for this month in Board Docs. There's nothing exceptional in that report. Also, I don't know if you're aware, but this month is School Board Director Appreciation Month. So I will reserve my comments on that until the public meeting in two weeks. But in the meantime, Ms. Burkhalter has purchased the board a new podium. So, very nice. Moving on to our present academic model. As you are aware, I asked the community their patience as we tried to formulate the next step. At the present time, there are too many moving parts, in my opinion, to formulate that next step. On November 30th, we brought our elementary students back if they wished, four days. 30th, we are less than 20 in-person days into that. Prior to the holiday, there was significant snowstorm in December. We spent a lot of time keeping our buildings open by moving staff around from the secondary level down to support various other buildings. So that has not settled yet, and we're wondering if that's going to happen in these post-holiday January weeks as well. So that's one of the reasons for the delay in a recommendation. I honestly believe that snowstorm in December was why we were able to make it to the holiday break without closing school down for one reason or another. So we'd like to maintain, try to maintain our present elementary model for the time being and make sure that we can do that before we expand it. At the secondary level, as most are aware, the significant difference is the distance within the classroom. Many of the elementary classrooms maintained six feet. Even a large number maintained five feet, and there are very few examples where we shrunk down to four or three feet. At the secondary level, if kids return, the class, the distance between desks in the classes will be three feet. So I don't believe we are ready to do that at the moment and do that successfully. So I'm asking for patience as we evaluate what's going on here in January. In addition, we have to come up with the state, the county, and the district with how we're going to vaccinate our staff in Phase 1B. And hopefully, we can do that in a systematic, quick way that allows us to keep our schools open. So that is the reason for that recommendation. I'll go into more length in an email later with the community. But basically, over the next couple of weeks, we're going to focus on trying to maintain what we have now. We're going to work to add our capacity to bring Friday back, reinstalling our transportation, and at the same time, covering those elementary lunches and recesses. And then we'll expand middle school and high school, maybe separately, based on our ability to maintain what we have and actually offer and expansion. So that's our status, and hopefully, the next two weeks will give us some clarity as to at least a timeframe on where we can go next. Thank you, Mr. Parentana.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. This will bring us to our first period of public comment. Do we have any signups?
There were no signups.
There's no signups. Does anyone in attendance wish to approach the podium for public comment? No one? Thank you. We'll move on, then. I'll bring us to Section 4, our action items for this evening. I'll read 4.01. Be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following lease of absence for administrative staff, and the list consists of one name only. Motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six to, I'm sorry, Ms. Bowman's with us, seven to zero. Thank you. Move on to 4.02. Mrs. Hollenbach, please.
I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following revised return from leave of absent for administrative staff. Again, there is one name on the list.
Thank you. Motion's been made on 4.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Sullivan, could you read 4.03, please?
Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff, and there are eight names on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Motion's made on 4.03. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Marington, would you read 4.04, please?
Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following lease of absence for certified staff. There are 17 names on the list.
Thank you. Motion's been made on 4.04. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Cirillo, would you read 4.05, please?
Be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following revised lease of absence for certified staff, and there is one name on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Motion's been made on 4.05. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Allen, could you read 4.06, please?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following revised return from leave of absence for certified staff, and there are 10 names.
Thank you. Motion's been made on 4.06. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, excuse me, motion passes seven to zero. Let's move this on to 4.07. I will read it. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of certified staff, and there are five names on the list. Motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach, would you read 4.08, please?
Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for the certificated and support staff subject to the following conditions. One, in the event the activity is canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor of Pennsylvania or of Health, prior to the commencement, the coach advisor will receive no compensation. And/or, in the event the activity has commenced and then canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor or Pennsylvania Secretary of Health, the coach advisor shall receive prorated compensation for the period of services rendered. There are one, two, six names on the list.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. Motion's been made on 4.08. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Sullivan, could you read 4.09, please?
Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for support staff, and there's 18 names on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Motion's been made on 4.09. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Marington, would you read 4.10, please?
Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of support staff, and there are nine names on the list.
Motion's been made on 4.10. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I'd like to make one. We have one employee resigning with 38 years of service in Neshamani in our Building Tech Department. We want to thank you for your many years of service, and you'll be sorely missed. Any additional comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Cirillo, would you read 4.11, please?
Be it resolved that the Neshamani School Board of Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence for support staff, and it consists of 23 individuals on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Motion's been made on 4.11. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Allen, would you read 4.12, please?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion for support staff revised leave of absence. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following revised leave of absence for support staff, and that list is of 11 names.
Thank you. Motion's been made on 4.112. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. And that concludes our action items for this meeting. I want to thank Dr. McGee, his staff, and our HR department for being able to constantly deal with the staff changes and keep us open while we're doing that. So, much appreciated. Brings us to Section 5.01, out-of-district placements. I'm sorry. These are the matters that are for approval at the next public board meeting. 5.01, out-of-district placements. 5.02, settlement agreement. 5.03, homebound instruction. 5.04, school calendar. 5.05, temporary suspension of Keystone Exam graduation requirements. 5.06, Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board. 5.07, resolution not to raise taxes above the Act I index. And they will all be on our next public board meeting's agenda. Moves us to committee reports. Mrs. Hollenbach, business operations?
Our next business operations meeting is next Tuesday, the 19th. It'll be here in the auditorium, I mean, in the conference, the boardroom. We will be discussing the budget and the Act I limit that we will be voting on in two weeks. So, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowman, educational development?
Sure. The educational development meeting was held on January 5th, last Tuesday. We discussed instructional model updates, specifically plans A through D. We also went over curriculum and instruction incentives, the distribution of Chromebooks to kindergarten and first grade, the MTSS system, middle school reading programs, social emotional learning and common language, and comprehensive planning, previously known as strategic planning. We will be holding our next Ed Development Meeting, March 16th, 2021, and these are the agenda file, the agenda items we plan to discuss. Instructional model updates, plans through A through D, comprehensive planning process, summer programs, summer professional development plans, and CNI curriculum and instruction in initiative updates, which will be ongoing through 2021. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Bring us to facilities and planning. Mr. Sullivan?
Our next meeting is next Wednesday in the boardroom here, and one of the topics that we will be talking about is, which we started last meeting, the possibility and feasibility of a new school on this property, elementary school.
Thank you, Mrs., Mr. Sullivan. Mrs. Boyle is absent this evening from policy, so I will take that. Just pull it up here. The next policy meeting is in the Maple Point Boardroom, is scheduled for January 28th at 6:30 PM. We'll be reviewing policy adoptions and updates. That brings us to our Section 7, representative reports. The IU Board, Mr. Cirillo, do you have anything?
Yes. I'd like to say the IU continues to facilitate regular dialogue among and between the school districts, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and the Bucks County Health Department. Priorities remain testing and vaccination plans. There are three free COVID testing sites now open for all school employees and contracted staff in Levittown, Newtown, and Quakertown. Vaccination plans are now underway with the local hospitals and county health department. School nurses are eligible now for vaccination as part of Phase 1A. The remaining school staff will be vaccinated as part of Phase 1B. Phase 1B may commence as early as February, though no specific details have been shared from the national, state, or local government agencies. The IU continues to serve students throughout the county. We are proud of our efforts this spring and summer to prepare our programs for robust in-person instruction to the maximum extent possible, accounting for all necessary COVID health and safety precautions.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Neshamani Education Foundation is Mrs. Boyle. Nobody, do you have any update for the NEF, Dr. McGee?
I do.
All right. At this, we apologize. Anyone, I'm sorry, Mr. Stanley?
I have it.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Hollenbach, please.
Hi, Saul. It's sitting there. The Neshamani Education met virtually on Monday, January 11th. Among the items discussed was the results of recent fundraising campaigns. Plans for upcoming campaigns using their foundation's new online donation services are underway. The Reston Gift Card Basket Raffle postponed from the spring is now being held online, and the winner will be announced Monday, February 1st. The Foundation Board would like to thank the Marington family for their recent donation and for generously directing memorial contributions to the NEF in honor of late Dr. David Marington. Dr. Marington helped start the foundation in 1993 and was a supporter after his retirement from the district. The next meeting will be held online on Monday, February 8th, and all of the community members are welcome to join. Please visit the NEF website for contact information.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. PSBA liaison is myself, similar to the report that Mr. Cirillo gave. The PSBA is working with all the state agencies to try and accelerate vaccination for our school employees. That will be in 1B. Right now, it's still unclear how that is going to be done, but we hope the state and the health, local health departments, excuse me, will work on centralized vaccination that will really expedite and help our staff get vaccinated in a very short period of time. So we look forward to the developments on that. Technical school, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Parentana. The technical school, Bucks County Technical School, met on December 15th at 7:30. A number of items were discussed. Our superintendent of record, Dr. Samuel Lee, reported on the professional council meeting of December 11th, reported that most of that was taken up with COVID protocols from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Dr. Leon Peskey's part administrative report gave us, laid out two scenarios for the ninth grade, opening up to 400 students or 425 students, keeping the cap of the total students at 1,500. His recommendation was that the ninth grade be opened up to 425 students. He reported that the articles of agreement were approved by all sending districts, which is wonderful news. We held our election for the coming year. The president of the Bucks County Technical High School Board is Mr. Gary Sanderson of Bensbury. The first vice president will be Kelly Buchanan from, Mrs. Kelly Buchanan from Bristol Township, and the second vice president, Ms. Heather Nicholas from Ben Salem Township. We moved to, the technical moved to 100% virtual on December 21st, and will be through January 13th through the holidays. That was our plan, and we are moving back to the 25% hybrid model this Thursday, January 14th, 2021. The application lottery was held virtually on Friday, December 18th, and there was a acceptance of a 21st century, yeah, grant, cohort eight, I always get that whole, 21st century, yeah. Anyway, the amount was $399,600. The next meeting will be January 25th at 7:30. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That brings us to our second public comment period. Does anybody wish to approach the podium for public comment? Seeing none, we're going to move on to future topics. Does anyone from the board have a future topic?
Yes, I do, Mr. Parentana.
Go right ahead, Mr. Marington.
Yeah, I'd just like to announce publicly that this is the beginning of my last year for this term on the school board, with discussions with my family. I will not be running for reelection. So, you know, the doors are open. All you people out there are willing to jump on the board. It's, you know, you have a year's notice. I also want to say, though, that Mr. Sullivan announced or mentioned already, one of the reasons I got involved on the board, you know, aside from a long family tradition here at Neshamani, was the people in Langhorne were pretty upset by the closing of Oliver Heckman. And living in Langhorne, I think that as a board, we need to come to some resolution with that property. I would hope that happens in the coming year. And I know that COVID has kind of taken over everything at this point, but there's a lot of reasons for trying to resolve the Heckman situation. You know, I think they can be discussed in another venue, but right now, the people I hear from in Langhorne, including a few council members, is that the property has increasingly become what they call an attractive nuisance. You know, the fences are constantly torn down. Kids are playing there. A lot of the windows have been broken and boarded. It's been, it's been empty for four years now, and I would just hope that in the coming year, that we can decide what to do with that property, whether it's reopen it as an elementary. There's been some preliminary discussion about maybe making it a central administration building, you know, and renovating it for that purpose. We could try to sell the property, which I think has been, we've tried to do, just not successfully. Other ideas I hear just from people in the borough is maybe reopen it as a public charter run by Neshamani, you know, find a use for the building. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, you know, as a, hopefully, a future topic. Okay? And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. Anyone else on future topics? At this time, I'd like to bring a topic up. This may not really fall under this category, but, you know, recently, Neshamani has received a large amount of right-to-know requests. Now, as a public agency, it's our duty and our responsibility to be extremely transparent as we can to the public and follow all the laws, rules, and regulations that are placed upon us. And I firmly believe that this board has been as transparent as possible with all the issues that we present in front of us, and those issues that we can legally discuss freely with the public. Recently, we received a host of right-to-know requests that were really extensive during the month of December, seemed to be, you know, in my opinion, and I'll only speak for myself, a coordinated effort around one subject matter. And unfortunately, these items do not come without cost. Our legal staff has spent 50 hours just in the month of December on these three requests, totaling almost $7,800 in fees to produce this information, mostly in the examination of emails and redactions thereof. That does not count the hours of time that our cabinet staff has to give in support of these materials. We at the board do not want to give the impression that we want to deny any person, any entity from legally requesting what is allowed by the law. But what we would like to ask is, before you put these extensive requests in, try calling us and talking to our cabinet-level staff and discussing your issue, and maybe we can get you the same information without going through the burden and the costs associated with some of these extensive email searches. I'd like to ask our attorney, Mr. Torrente, if he could go into some description of what's involved in producing these latest requests.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Parentana. It's, I got, sure. Thank you, Mr. Parentana. It's, to piggyback on what Steve had said, it is a time-consuming process on some of these requests, specifically when you're requesting emails for a period of nine or 10 months, it does produce about 2,000 to 3,000 emails sometimes, and those documents do have to be reviewed for redactions. The attachments have to be reviewed. There's exemption logs that have to be prepared. So it is, it is a time-consuming process. It's not just a matter of doing an email search and producing documents. So if there is a way to get specifically something that you're looking for, please reach out to the district, as Steve did say. The letters that have to be produced with the documentation has to identify a host of reasons why things are redacted and exemption logs are prepared. So again, it is, it is time-consuming. So if you could, just keep that in mind when you, when you do make these requests in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torrente. That'll move us on to board comment. Does anyone have any board comment this evening? You want to go, John? Mr. Allen, please?
If no one else, I'd like to... If no one else, I'd like to thank, wish everyone a Happy New Year. Welcome everyone back. In the words of my old physics teacher, onward and upward to bigger and better things. Let's hope that's true. On a personal note, as we were reading through our list of retirements, it's with a bit of mixed emotions. I see my cousin, cousin-in-law, Mrs. Stephanie Miguelis, on the list for 26.4 years. I know that retirement was in discussion. I knew it was coming, but I'm still seeing it with a bit of mixed emotions. I always enjoyed having Stephanie on our staff and having discussions with her about Neshamani, and I know she's held numerous teaching and administrative positions, most notably principal, throughout the district, and she will be missed. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And I apologize, I usually try to catch those long-term employees, and I missed that one, so.
I apologize.
And thank you for your service, Mrs. Miguelis. Just before we close the meeting, just want to remind everybody of our next dates. January 19th is our business operations, 6:30 in the district boardroom. On January 20th is our facilities and planning committee meeting, 6:30 in the district boardroom. On January 26th is our next board meeting, 7 o'clock in this auditorium. And on January 28th is the policy committee meeting, 6:30 in the district board office meeting room. Hearing no further need for public comment, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. All in favor? All right. Oh, I apologize. I did it again. Meeting's over. Thank you.